Welcome. This is the February 19th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by setting in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, February 22nd, 2019. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, February 2nd, 2019, the date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, March 10th, 2019. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. First, Application 18-033 for 15 Green Street has been withdrawn. It's going to be resubmitted, and we're going to waive the fees. There was a little mix-up on the application, and we're going to give them a chance to come back next month. So we're going to go on to second application, 19-001, variance request for Radial New Haven for mixed-use manufacturing office at 77 Northfoot Road. Also, voting tonight will be Mr. Carmody, Mr. Parisi, Ms. Tata, and Mr. Rice, and myself. Mr. Parisi, do you have a comment you want to make about this application?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're well aware, I recused myself at the last meeting, and after further clarification with the town attorney, I've been advised that my relationship was too distant to have to recuse myself, so I'd like that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes first. Applicant seeks use variance to allow light assembly manufacturing use of 65% where manufacturing is not permitted use in an I-5 district. If approved, this variance would also serve as change of use for the applicant. When evaluating this application, particularly when a use variance is requested, the board must evaluate whether the strict application of the regulations produces an unusual hardship. The board should base decision upon the particular facts presented by the applicant in ensuing discussion. Any impact on existing and proposed site changes, intensity of proposed uses, parking needs, and so forth, may and should inform this decision. Applicant has provided presentation demonstrating their atypical light manufacturing process, single-site modification of steel doors with awning to be erected over lift at rear entrance, and ability to meet existing parking requirements facilities. Should the board decide to grant this variance request, conditions limiting the nature and amount of the manufacturing component, as well as the single minor site modifications, as submitted and proposed by applicant on correspondence facts submitted and received January 22nd, 2019, should be included. And we have correspondence dated January 22nd, 2019, from Attorney Dennis Sennaviva, and also a letter from the Town of Wallingford Economic Development Commission dated February 7th, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Sennaviva, the Sennaviva Law Firm, representing the owner, or rather, the applicant, Radial New Haven. To my left is Bill Neal, a vice president, who will be making part of the presentation this evening. The property, as you know, is a parcel of land at 777 Northfoot Road. It is 4.83 acres in size. It's located in the I-5 zone. It is developed already with a 32,620-square-foot building that previously housed a call center. It is located on the west side of Northfoot Road, as you've seen. It's a few properties back from Route 68, is not on Route 68. Now, the applicant proposes to use, excuse me, this site for the relocation of its business from New Haven to Wallingford. Radial is a global company with offices on three continents and 13 countries that produces more than 27,000 parts, and it works for seven, in seven different industries: aerospace, defense, industrial and rail, medical, telecom, and test, and measurement. Now, Bill will make part of the explanation tonight, part of the presentation, to tell you what, more specifically, the company's operation is like, so you'll have a clearer sense of the lab-like setting in which the operation takes place. And again, he's just handed something out, and he'll go through the pictures with you in a moment. It's an operation that is handled on one shift. The I-5 zone, as you know, does not permit this light manufacturing use as a matter of right, that's why we're here. When the applicant came to Wallingford and found this site that suited its needs to a T, they met with your Economic Development Commission, and of course, you have a letter in your file from them supportive of the application, and they also met in turn with the town's planning and zoning staff. The initial strategy, as they sought a way to move forward with their need to move to this location, was to talk to the town about amending the permitted uses in the I-5 zone, doing a text amendment to allow a light manufacturing use like this within certain conditions such as no plating activities, no metal cutting, not being a hazardous waste generator, et cetera. I think you've seen some of those proposed conditions that we had discussed with town staff, they're in your record. However, after suggesting that path of going to P&amp;Z for a text amendment, we had another discussion, several other discussions, and I think begrudgingly, the town staff proposed this path, because I think we all know that doing a use variance is something that is atypical, but one here where it seemed to be the better path for this particular applicant. And again, that was in a collaborative effort to bring this forward. And primarily, there was a concern that since most of the properties owned I-5 are located in the town's watershed, any text change that allowed even light manufacturing had the risk of permitting potential users that might create problems for the watershed. So instead of having a broad brush and doing a text amendment, which would have permitted this use, the contemplation and the strategy was to come forward to you. So I wanted to give you that by way of background. I've sort of vetted that through our zoning and planning staff, so they know that that's part of the presentation, because again, we're here recognizing that this process allows, should you see fit to grant the application, you have the ability to condition it in a way that will protect the town and its watershed. And again, you may have noted that I had submitted, as part of our application, there were some conditions of approval that are in your staff folder. Now, the hardship arises from the language that is found in Section 4.10A and 4.10B of your zoning regulations. 4.10A is the purpose clause for the I-5 zone, and its language tells the reader that the I-5 zone was created to utilize the key location of lands with accessibility to Route I-91 while protecting the town's public water supply watershed by requiring high standards for development. And that is the applicant, that's Radial. They have high standards of their development, and this property, again, suits their needs to a T. Those uses that are already permitted in the I-5 zone are very close, but not exactly on point, to be fair, but very close to the sort of operation that fits my client's operation. For example, research laboratories are permitted. A large portion of what Radial does is research and development. Office buildings are permitted. A large portion of the proposed use of this building will be office space. Scientific research and development is permitted. That is a large part of the applicant's business. Labs are permitted. And again, this is, you see from the pictures, I think, that this is a lab-like setting in their current location in New Haven. So, again, we think that this location works well for the applicant, it seems to work well for the town, at least insofar as everyone we've heard from so far. And with that, I'm going to have Bill just to go over perhaps the pictures he submitted and tell you a little bit about Radial.
Sure. Thank you, Bill Neal, Radial New Haven, and thank you for serving. Volunteers on a Tuesday night is what makes democracy work in a small town. Radial, as Attorney Sennaviva said, is a global company making, we primary, we call it interconnect devices, so fiber optic coaxial cables, power, other kinds of cables. In New Haven, we primarily focus on aeronautics and defense. Our biggest customer in North America of Radial ultimately is Boeing. You haven't flown on a commercial aircraft that didn't have Radial connectors deep inside of it, and mostly in the cockpit. When we saw this site, we thought it was perfect for Radial. We've adjusted from manufacturing, really. We don't have a machine shop anymore, we do high-end assembly and prototypes. We see our customer engineers come, work with our engineers, make prototypes here, and discuss in English, in the time zones in the U.S. Our biggest customers are Raytheon, Rockwell Collins, which is soon to become Collins Radio, and rename the electronic part of United Technologies, Northrop Grumman, et cetera. So, and if you look at some of the pictures, I showed you Radial, which is now 65,000 square feet, right on the Mill River, never had a problem in that area. Some of the products we make, the fiber optic to digital transceiver is really the leader in the industry. We're doing, right now, an example is there's a refit of the F-15s, moving from all digital to fiber and digital.
I think that shows the size.
Yeah, and the little inset there shows the, this transceiver against a penny. As, you could just imagine, if the Air Force puts it in F-15, it's checked out for extreme conditions, and it's very reliable, and it's much, much smaller than the competitors. We're making that here in New Haven, hope to move to make it in Wallingford. You've got some views of polishing, which is an operation in fiber optic, the usual assembly benches, you can see almost every seat has a computer, high-end measuring devices. We have a clean room, which is prefab, which will move. We've already worked out with the landlord how we will fit that in there. See some military coaxial harnesses. This picture on the right is connectors that are about a quarter inch in diameter. Again, more assembly. It's almost all lab-like, and again, when we saw this building, we thought it was better that we have a 22-foot clear, four bay doors, we just don't need them. I always say you can drop a day's worth of work on your foot, because it's so small and light. Our shipping and receiving is 90% UPS and FedEx, small packages. So again, we have approximately, I'd say, we have about 80 to 100 employees right now. Two to five tractor trailers a month is it. There's 200 parking places at the site, so there'll never be a lack of parking for us. And being right on 95, it really fits the use that you had, because we have probably plus or minus 100 hotel visits a month, I mean, a year, I'm sorry, not that many, I wish. About half from domestic customers that are coming in to work with our engineers, and about half our international colleagues coming to meet here. So being right on the highway, right next to hotels, and we've actually, more and more of our colleagues from France have been using the Aer Lingus connection through Hartford, which anybody that's arrived in JFK and come to Wallingford knows it's not fun. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them about Radial.
Well, first off, thank you for thinking about Wallingford. We appreciate that. I just have a couple questions about the whole thing. Now, there's no plans on the changing the building size or anything about the building, so the building's still going to look the same, except something for a loading dock in the back, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, we don't even intend a loading dock. There's no double doors on the exterior of the building. We're going to do a double steel door in the back with a little elevator to get up to truck height, and an awning to cover workers when they're unloading trucks in the rain.
Okay.
The biggest thing will be a pallet jack.
And it'll be a quiet manufacturing?
Oh, yes.
There's no presses, anything going on?
Nope.
And then, one of my last questions is, we received the conditions of approval, and this is something that you guys are all in agreement with?
Yes.
With staff? And it's going to be put on the record, and everybody's okay with this?
Yeah, we worked them out, reviewed them with staff, and very pleased that we both are very comfortable with them.
Okay. All right. Amy, is there anything, before I go to everybody else, is there anything that we need to really think about on this, other than what we've covered?
I think Mr. Neal has presented some issues about parking and their deliveries, certainly the normal course of business and its effects with even that light manufacturing component is what you should consider. They have very minor site modifications, and as just discussed, I think it's covered as long as these conditions, which limit them to just that, are-
Added to the record.
Are added to any approval that you may grant.
Okay, thank you. Has anybody got any questions? Mr. Rice?
The operation itself, is this basically a first-shift type operation?
Yes, we run one shifts, one shift. I usually, one or the other of us that worked past 5:00 usually lock up at 5:30 or 6:00 or 7:00. In fact, there's, the guy that invented this transceiver is a PhD in electrical engineering, and he often locks up at 7:00, because he works late.
Quiet? That's great.
We, yeah, in fact, we are exploring, we use some compressed air, and we're looking at going down to a 10 or 15 horsepower compressor, very small, and not piston, because those make noise.
Thank you.
Has anybody else got any questions? Mrs. Tata?
Thank you. I was just curious as to why you were leaving New Haven, is this a larger, it doesn't seem like it's larger, or is it?
Our site in New Haven, well, first of all, we own it, and really nowadays, it's for an industrial company to own a land and a facility is really not the best financing. We need, we, Radial invests 12 to 15% of sales back into R&amp;D, and so we'd rather lease, and it's just better financing. It's also, it's 65,000 square feet and three lots, and we just don't need 65,000 square feet. And we looked at using the middle building, but then we own two lots on either side, it just, it's really a non-fit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Has anybody else got any questions? I might, I'm just thinking of something, and would you, just maybe to protect that in the future, that you don't go to a second shift, would that be something that would be, and I don't know, I'm gonna, I just, it came, when you start talking 7 o'clock, and then I'm thinking, and I'm just curious on what staff thinks about it.
I haven't thought of that, I, you know-
I'd hate to pin you to it, but it just came to my mind, and I'm just wondering, you know, that it was brought up, and now-
You know, for us, for flexibility, I'd really hate to say-
No, yeah.
It's, if you know where that road is, there's really no neighbors, there's no-
No, I understand, I was just-
Yeah, I mean-
It was brought up, the timeline-
We always hope for more sales, and, you know, I'd hate to say, we have no plans to do that, but, you know, we definitely don't have any plans to do the what's restricted in here, but I'd be reluctant to-
Okay. Amy, would staff have a problem if they went to second shift, and we were, you know, it was brought up, just Ray brought up the timeline of their hours, and then it came to my mind about what if they went to a second shift, and is that something in the regs that we have to worry about, or?
It's certainly within your purview to restrict hours, but if the impacts of the industry of the business are such that have no impact, should it extend the hours, you know, that's something to weigh as well. That's, it's within your purview and within what the applicant would be willing to accept. We have not discussed it as staff-
Okay.
Having an issue one way or the other.
I mean, I'd hate to, I'd hate to tie a business, I mean, they're supposedly a quiet business, and no noise, and they are in an industrial area, and just came to my mind, and I thought I'd throw it out there, just to see what your reaction was, but I'd hate to tie a business to making more.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, I haven't, we haven't discussed and thought deeply about that, and we have no plans to go to a second shift at this time, but from time to time, if you have a restrictive piece of equipment and a large order or some delay, we might want to have people work.
Later.
Occasionally work Saturdays, but even then, only Saturday 8 to noon.
Mr. Rice, go ahead.
At the facility that you're at right now in New Haven, do you actually operate a second shift or not?
No, no, we haven't, no.
Thank you.
No, we, really, for a few years during the Iraq War, when we were making some very specific things, that was a big, big rush, we had a second shift. But other than that, before, after, for 20 years, we, in 30 years there, we had a second shift for about two and a half years.
Mr. Parisi?
Yeah, I have a question for Amy. If they should later on go to a second shift, do they have to have their variance reheard or reviewed?
If you have not restricted it, which you don't need to, or you may, if you have not restricted it as a condition, then they could go to a second shift. Without a variance, excuse me, that would not involve a variance.
That would be a wonderful problem, quite frankly.
It's always-
God bless you.
Too, yeah, too much sales is always a good problem.
I'll take it, the taxes will-
We really don't foresee it, but I don't feel like-
How can you tell?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, the other point is that when we tried to cobble together those conditions of approval, not being presumptuous, we tried to do them in a way that addressed really the concerns of that particular location, and we didn't talk in terms of timeline, more about sort of operations that don't create either noise or contaminants. I think that was important. And again, I'm not sure how, what the hours for the call center were, they might have been 24/7, I'm not sure.
Good point, I, yeah, good point. Okay, is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Go ahead.
Good evening, Tim Ryan from the Economic Development Commission. I'm not, you have a letter that we had submitted, signed by Joe, you're our chairman. So I won't repeat a lot of the data in there, I'll reinforce some of it, but even before that, I'd like to say that I've been working in your economic development office now for several years. I've never addressed this commission, and I, the reason I bring that up is that I want you to know that without thorough investigation and strong support of an application, we wouldn't be here. So, the process is such that when we became aware of the opportunity with Radial, as I do in most cases, I went down to New Haven and spent a half a day at their facility. Met Bill, met his team, understood the process, walked the floor. As a lifelong resident of Wallingford, I don't want anything that's going to be disruptive either. So, we addressed things like smells, noises, any type of environmental inventories, and I will tell you that none of that exists. Their present facility in New Haven abuts a residential neighborhood, so it exists right now much closer to residential than this, is even, well, there is no residential around this one. Being very aware and being very sensitive to the fact that it's in the watershed was another consideration. So, we went down, we looked, we understand their business, we experienced their business, I asked all the questions, many of which you've asked already, to make sure that we're not going to come and support something that we don't think is a great fit for our town. The next step after that was to sit down with our town planner and Amy to go over the entire process. So Bill came in and explained the entire process to them, as is noted in the letter from the EDC, that neither one of them are opposed to this application. I'll say further that, you know, as part of, and it's addressed in my, in the letter as well, but, you know, part of the POCD, Planet of Conservation and Development project, was for us to take a look at, and planning and zoning has agreed to take a look at, uses in the I-5 zone, because the I-5 zone uses right now are very restrictive. They are basically office building and hotels. There are two active hotel applications, one of which we'll hear in a couple of minutes, so I'll address you twice in the last several years that I've been here. But, you know, the hotel market is pretty well built out, the office market, as I'm sure you're aware, is nonexistent. So we are looking at any buildings that we have in these, this I-5 zone, and even in our I-X zone for that matter, and looking at them for adaptive reuse. What else can it be? Because the likelihood that these office buildings are going to refill his office is not strong. This particular site is one of the few sites that lends itself to adaptive reuse, and I'm saying, I will say that this is the best adaptive reuse I could possibly imagine on that site. Again, it's, it's assembly. You know, their NICS code has them designated as a manufacturer, but in many communities, there are subsets to manufacturing in the planning and zoning regulations for light manufacturing, assembly, et cetera. Ours, you know, pretty much has all manufacturing in one big bucket, but to compare them to traditional manufacturers that we are very glad are here in town is a bit of a misnomer. This is a clean operation, it's an assembly facility, you've seen the photographs of their assembly floor, so we're not even going to know they're there. There is considerably more traffic on the site when Webster Bank had their facility there than there will be with Radial. And it is my understanding that, and to the best of my knowledge, that Webster Bank did work well beyond 9 to 5, Monday through Friday. It was, it was an all volume-driven business, so, that said, it is without any reservation at all that, you know, economic development completely and fully supports this application. It's one of those where we say, we got lucky on this one, and we got a great user for a, for a site that could be, you know, repurposed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody like to speak against this application? Do you have anything further?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board. I'm just going to make a comment on this. I think this is a great fit for their hearing, their application, and them explaining what they're doing. I'm in favor for it, I'll be honest with you, I don't see a problem with it. I, anybody, whoever up here decides, make a motion, whatever, we need to, if it is in favor, we need to add these eight stipulations to it, conditions of approval.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve this variance for mixed-use manufacturing office, interior manufacturing is not permitted, with the conditions of approval attached, number 1 through 8.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Carmody.
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
And Chairman Rusik?
Yes, the application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for choosing Wallingford.
Yes.
Okay, next application is 19-002, variance request from Gordon and Kudaskey, Hadi, and Associates for front landscaping of 35 feet and parking setback buffer of 35 feet to construct a hotel at four miles drive. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes first. Applicant seeks to reduce front landscaping requirement as well as front parking setback to 35 feet where 50 feet is required to construct a hotel in an I-5 district. Regulations require landscaping for 50% of front setback, 100 feet, front setback for this zone, and parking is not permitted within 50 feet of front property line. Proposal requests 35 feet or 50 feet is required for both. Submitted proposal orients the building- Submitted proposal orients the building where front yard serves as a side yard as the parcel is a rear lot. Applicant will be seeking site plan approval from PZC following determination from the ZVA for these two variances regarding size, area of front yard. Elements of the composition of the reduced landscape area will be determined by the PZC. Therefore, if granted, this office recommends a condition of any approval to be, the landscaping plan to be as required by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we also have an email from Jeffrey Gordon from Kodasvati and Associates to Amy Torrey dated January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And we have a letter from the Town of Wallingford Economic Development Commission dated February fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Jeffrey Gordon, principal partner with Kodasvati and Associates, we do business at two six three Boston Post Road in the Town of Orange. We are engineers, planners, surveyors, and I'm here tonight representing Wallif, Wallingford Lodging Partners, who are the contract purchasers for the parcel, which was Lot Five or known as Four Miles Drive. This is a parcel that has an unusual history, it was approved as part of a subdivision back nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-three under the CB twelve district. Therefore, when the I-5 regulations came in and overlaid the area, that rendered it a non-conforming lot as far as a number of, a number of items, most specifically would be the lot area. Also, when the owner, Sushale, came in, they came in for a series of variances, that's now the Fairfield Inn, they came in for a series of variances to build their hotel, including front yard setbacks, also setbacks for their parking lot, they got a variance, or their parking lot's about three feet from the front property line. But they also got variances for this particular lot for an office building and there were a number of variances granted for that, including front yard, side yard, and height. What has changed in the interim is that Miles Drive, or originally was called Chalet Drive, it ended in a cul-de-sac, but it continued on and then you had the Homewood Suites. So at the time they got their variances, what they counted as the front yard was the part of the site that faced the Fairfield Inn and a retention pond, but under the regulations, once that road got extended, the front yard is the road, is the yard that's most parallel to the street on the other side of any building there. So that became a different front yard for us. Back when they were approved for the office building, they had a, a planting buffer along that side of twenty feet, approved. And the whole twenty foot was fully graded, I, I do have plans, which I can share with you. When they, when they granted that, they were going to fully grade that and remove all the plantings in that area and have to come back with new plantings. Our plan would be to go to thirty-five feet and we'd be able to, to keep quite a bit of the landscaping and the wooded area that already exists and then supplement that with additional planting. Plus, the way the grades go, we would be lowered by about eight to ten feet and that's the back end of the Homewood Suites that we'd be facing, where they have a fire lane and a basketball court. So that's what we're talking about, is we, we're going for what was approved for an office building variance for twenty feet and a landscape buffer of twenty feet, we're asking for thirty-five feet and thirty-five feet.
Now you say you have some plans you'd like to.
Sure.
You could put them up on easel and the microphone's over there on the desk.
Okay, so this is the parcel in question right here, this is the site that had all the variances, this was going to be a sixty-foot-high office building surrounded by parking and the parking lot, as you can see, came within twenty feet of the property line and it was being graded, they were cutting into the embankment the entire twenty feet. The Sushale over here, which is existing, their parking lot comes within three feet of the property line, so they're, they're quite a bit narrower than what we're proposing here for a similar use. Just as a blow-up of what you have in your handout, this is the area where we're talking about coming in at thirty-five feet and then we're going to have a vegetated buffer between us and the fire lane of the Homewood Suites, that's going to be somewhere, existing woods of about thirty to thirty-five foot wide and then we would be proposing and be required to supplement that with a fairly substantial planting buffer. Also, again, the grade is such where this parking lot area here is going to be about eight to ten feet lower than that drive lane over there. And that's really what we're asking for here, this is a Homewood, not a Homewood, this is a Hampton Inn and Suites which is being proposed. We were very happy to hear the preceding applicant talk about all the hotels that they want, rooms that they want to rent, we think that's good. This area is a good regional draw between New Haven and Hartford area. The Hampton Inn is a Hilton product and what has happened is the, the Hampton Inn and Suites that used to be in Meriden, lost their flag, they lost their ability to be a Hilton product, so they downgraded and they're now a Red Roof Inn. This would be a, a four-story building with an indoor pool and all those bells and whistles that go with it. It would be, I believe, a hundred and five units and the associated parking that goes with it. This is an unusual circumstance based on the old zone that it was, the parcel was approved under, being a rear lot and having rotating yards from, what was the side yard becoming a front yard? And the lay of the land is also unique in that there's, from this corner here to that corner down there, there's about a thirty-foot change in elevation. So it is a challenging piece of property, which is probably why since nineteen eighty-two, it has never been developed. We have a trusted player, they've been doing a lot of development in this area, they are out of South Dakota, they're a developer of hotels there and they have a Homewood Suites under construction in Orange, Connecticut, and they're planning a couple more right along the I-91 corridor.
So I imagine you've played with all the numbers of moving around on this property, so you didn't have to come in front of us for this setback?
There's a lot of interpretation that went on with this, there's different case law that would have maybe given us a leg, that we could have applied the old regulations and whatnot, but having, having had our attorney talk to Attorney Small and talking to Casey, we felt that continuing with past practices of the community, this was the best housekeeping measure because of all the variances that were granted under those CB twelve parcels adjoining us, that it would be a measure of consistency to handle it this way.
And that driveway that you're going to be putting in, that's not there now, correct?
This driveway exists.
That does exist.
That exists, the drainage is here, goes into that, we would be coming in.
Is, is that driveway part of the hotel that's in the front there, the, what's that, a Fairfield Inn now or?
That's a Fairfield Inn, that's a Homewood Suites.
Yeah.
We would, we own half of it, they own half of it.
Okay.
And then there's cross easements and whatnot, and drainage easements, and there's a sanitary sewer easement to the Town of Wallingford that goes through the property as well.
Just a question for Amy. Amy, as in your comments, we are just going to be deciding whether to grant this setback and they still have to go to planning and zoning for approval and they're the ones that are going to be approving what greenery they have and shrubs and all that, correct?
That's correct, the only variance request in front of you are for front yard and then the front yard parking distance from the, from the front boundary, both being reduced to thirty-five feet rather than fifty. And they have eliminated, they had an earlier request, which has been eliminated for, for a height variance. They will move on to Planning and Zoning Commission for a full site plan approval and thus the recommended condition that I've submitted to you per, what is customary from the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, is to require that the composition of said landscaping plan, we're only looking at width or area, be determined by the requirements of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And you want that part of the?
I would like that to be part of it, they would, they, they should, they will decide that as part of the site plan, what constitutes the landscaping plan and what, what caliper of trees and such and what the composition of that landscaping is.
Okay, just, that was just all for clarification.
Just the area, that's all you need to look at, they will be moving forward beyond that.
Right, I was just for clarification for everyone. All right, so anybody got any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have.
Mr. Parisi.
An observation, in other words, we're not the final word on this.
No, they still have to go in front of planning and zoning, so we're just, if we, if we approve their setback, then, and their parking setback, then they will go to planning and zoning for the rest of the, they, for final approval, that's where the approval's going to happen.
So they could deny it?
They could, right.
I was just going to say, there's an obvious question to me, why does it come to us if they're making the final decision?
Well, we have to approve, we have to approve them to be able to possibly put it on this piece of property.
If I may.
Go ahead.
The Planning and Zoning Commission will be evaluating the merits and the requirements of a site plan, which include certain setbacks, certain landscaping requirements. First, we need to address the fact that they would like to provide less as a front setback and a less of a parking buffer, that's all you're entertaining, the full site plan will be evaluated with that lesser area, should you approve it at the planning zoning, okay.
Oh, whatever. I don't agree with you, it's obvious. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So nobody's got any questions, we're good. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Ryan.
And Tim Ryan, Economic Development Commission, saw twice in one night, but, you know, we talk about highest and best use of sites, we believe strongly that this is the highest and best use of this particular piece of land. We've had conversations with people and I've heard people say, you know, that this, the office building was approved some, I think almost thirty years ago and it was never built. So people say, we've been trying to market this land for thirty years. Well, I would submit that we've been trying to market this land forever, nothing has ever been built on it. It's a site with challenges and we have a great opportunity to take and generate, you know, tax revenue for the town and see a building and see an, an active piece of property, which it has never been. And keep in mind that the I-5 uses are office and hotel and we have a hotel with an application, so, and the office market, you know, believe me when I tell you, is dismal and is projected to be dismal for a long time coming, so, again, we look at this and say this is an ideal use for this particular piece of property and, you know, what the applicant is asking for is less than what was approved some thirty years ago in terms of the setback. So the front yard was approved at twenty feet, he's saying, I'm going to give you thirty-five feet. So I think it's a less onerous use than was approved in the past and a great opportunity to take a, a challenging site and, and make, you know, good economic use of it. So we strongly request your support of the application, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? Do you have anything further? Hearing and seeing nothing, I am going to close this public hearing and then open up for a possible action discussion of the board, just want to remind it, whoever, if anybody does make a motion, that we have to include the landscape, landscaping plan to be as required by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the front yard landscaping proposal of thirty-five feet where fifty feet exists with the condition that the landscaping plan must be, I'm sorry, the landscaping plan to be as required by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to approve the front landscaping, Mr. Carmody.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Tata.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Chairman Rusik.
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make another motion that we approve the parking buffer of thirty-five feet where fifty feet is required.
Second.
Motion to approve the parking buffer, Mr. Carmody.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Tata.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
And Chairman Rusik.
Yes, your variance has been approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we, can I have a consideration of the minutes, I have a motion to approve the minutes from last month.
So move, Mr. Chairman, second.
Mr. Chairman, I will abstain, I was not present at that meeting.
What was that? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to abstain from voting because I was not here at that meeting.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes from last month?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh, wow. A motion for adjournment.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.